All right, welcome everybody to our August, what is this? Yeah, August City Council meeting, August the 20th, second meeting of the month. We've got a very extensive agenda tonight, so we'll go ahead and observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Rhett, you want to lead us in the pledge?
It's always enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. As far as the guests are concerned, we do have one that signed up prior to the meeting to speak, so we will let Mr. Hinton go first. And if it's okay with the council, he's here to discuss F9 so that we can kind of clear the room. If it was okay if we just let him have his report and then we'll go into F9 and talk about that while he's here. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for time tonight. One of the things, it's, I believe it's in your packet, it was at least in the packet that I saw that was emailed out to me. There should be two maps, one looks like this and one looks like this. And if I gambled correctly, I saved Development Authority ten sheets of paper. I see one.
All the way in the back.
Very back. There we go. All right. Good deal. Fifty cents saved. So what we have going on at the Brushy Fork, next to the Brushy Fork Readiness Center and Event Center, is property that's being developed currently by Aaron Harris and he's going to be building his auction house. And that's what, this map here is a site plan for Aaron Harris Auction House and Parking that he's going to be constructing. We've worked with the National Guard to get a shared easement to get in and out of our property by sharing the entrance and exit that is already there for the Readiness Center and Event Center. We applied for an MM109 permit or Highway Entrance Permit and DOH recommended for safety reasons that there not be two entrances and exits right next to each other on Brushy Fork. Recommended we go work with National Guard and try to get some kind of agreement that we could share that you use the right of way. So that was successful. We do have an easement that's been executed by not only the Guard but also the Development Authority, so we're good to go there. And so that's where, I had a conversation with the mayor, I think it was this week or last week, I don't know, things are starting to run together. But in talking with him about how we could partner together in looking at helping the Development Authority with design of this road and then working together on construction of the road. And one of the things that we can do as a Development Authority is however we figure out how that works and how the assistance can be melded together with the city, we can go after an Industrial Access Road Grant, I A R G. Yeah, I think that's the acronym. And we've done this before. If, I don't know if anybody drives on Industrial Park Road, the warehouse there is, but a couple of years ago, we wrote an Industrial Access Road Grant to get that repaved. And that was about $400,000 and Department of Highways did the work. There is an ability for us to go after the grant and have the city do the work. And then I would think either the city or Development Authority be the applicant, doesn't really matter, but we'd be able to cover the costs with that grant. The one thing about the grant is it is contingent upon an industrial business going in. And so we have, out there, we do have a company that has a purchase option on six acres for the medical cannabis. And I know we talked about that back in February, back before the pandemic. And permits are still not out yet for that, for that company, so there's, it's not really sure whether or not they'll be awarded. But if they are, they would be making an investment and then we could leverage that investment to go after Industrial Access Road dollars to help pave a road going back into the development.
Would they pave, okay, would they pave, you know, when you turn in off the Brushy Fork, Brushy Fork Road, and that rock road, you're talking about making that go all the way around on the other side. Is that correct?
No, this, this would, this would be going, so if you went into the Brushy Fork Readiness Center, you would go to the right. And the Event Center parking would be to the left. And so we would go to the right and then pave a road down, this diagram is, this is Aaron Harris's property. And then the Readiness Center is over here and the road would come down this side in between the two properties. And so it would be industrial access.
Straight line.
Yeah, it would be industrial access for the companies or company that would be back there.
Well, it would be nice to have that other road paved too, but I guess you can't do that.
Well, I doubt it, because, no, not with the Industrial Access Road Grant, no, no, definitely not.
Rob and I met about this and I attended the Development Authority's meeting at 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning. And I also had a conversation following Rob and I's discussion with Jerry Arnold, Tom O'Neil, and Jay Holland about this, just to work out feasibility. The Development Authority has, I hope it's okay if I say this, Development Authority through this grant would agree to pay for the materials of the project and our partnership with them would be that our city crew would then be the one to execute putting the road in. Since this is within city limits, we are not doing anything outside of city limits. And this, this would, this would help development along that corridor in there behind Aaron Harris's property, which we already helped him a significant amount earlier this, or actually last year now. But this is something I think that we should, we should absolutely consider favorably. And what we need to do this evening is we need to, we need to get the council's approval on the project and then start laying out plans, you know, surveys and get the rights of way and everything like that, so that when, when the season is favorable, we can, we can put the road in without any, any road, any road block, no pun intended. Does anybody have any questions or any comments regarding the project?
So these three partials in the rear, do they have access to the sanitary sewer and the water that when we ran into Aaron's property?
Yeah, so the, the water runs down where the road would be, not, not underneath the road, but runs on that side of the property, the water main does. And then the sewer runs on the property that abuts Neil Roar's property. And so that sewer line runs all the way from Brushy Fork Road back to where it ties in down near the creek.
So what, what are these partial owners going to have to do to get hooked up? Do they have to get a right of way or something, or they have access to it?
No, they'll have access to it, because technically the sewer line is on the property that, that they would be, they would be buying, but the city has an easement to have that on there. And the other thing, in regard to the medical cannabis, you know, that is manufacturing, so it's in the city limits. So a plus for the city is that that is manufacturing BNO. If successful, that would be a substantial, I think, windfall for the city. So that's, that's another positive aspect of partnering on the development.
We were presented something, a presentation about that in the beginning when he bought that lot. And the idea maybe to add to some other businesses out there and that kind of stuff and water and sewer was not going to be an issue, but I remember that much.
Well, and part of the company that applied for medical cannabis, I think they met with the Water Board and Sewer Board and had to get, they had to get system capacity limitations. And I think that, well, I know that they submitted their application, so obviously there's capacity there in excess of what they would need. So it seems that the utility opportunity is there too.
So the $400,000, I may have missed this, but is that, would that cover the materials and labor?
So the $400,000 was the, the grant that we
Right.
were awarded for the Industrial Park Repave, Industrial Park Road Repave. What this grant would be? I don't know. We'd have to figure out what.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to, and that's the thing about kind of getting started is just working with Jay and Jerry and figuring out what the design would look like and being able to have a cost estimate. So then we could figure out what, what kind of a grant can we go after. There are limitations about how much you can go after based on the level of industrial investment that's going to be going in. So I think it's like 10%. You can only ask for 10% of what the total investment would be. So if the medical cannabis processing, which is considered manufacturing, is going to invest $2 million, then we can only ask for $200,000.
So, so the, the action that we will be taking tonight is to actually approve the partnership or the road itself or approve looking into the grant and so forth, I'm not sure.
I think that's a question for the mayor.
Well, I think, I think for us tonight, I think we need to, this, this motion and approval pending this evening would be to start the process so that we can execute a grant submission on his end. So he knows that we have, that we are supportive of the project and then that we are also able to conduct our side of it, which is gaining a survey and rights of way for, on, on our side. So that the partnership can then move forward to actually, once we have numbers in place, we can, we can then bring it back to execute the, you know, we'll know, we'll know what's, what's on the table as far as the road goes with a potential grant and then when our, when our crews have it in their timeframe to be able to do it.
So we would be approving the application to, for the grant?
Well, the grant's on.
Or preparation?
We're approving the preparation part on our, we're giving him, you know, we're giving him the, we support this idea as a, as a project, so that he can go and start his grant application and then we can start our side of, of the survey. We're not actually saying that the roads are done deal tonight. We're saying that we want to start the ball rolling so that we could, because we're, you know, we're still with the way the calendar is, you know, we're not going to be able to completely build a road in the middle of winter. So we need to start the ball rolling now so that come springtime, we've got, we've got all of our pieces in place to then lay the road, if that's the way, the direction that we, we choose to go at that time.
And this has been discussed with Jerry Arnold, right?
Yes. Yeah, I met with them this, this, this past week, so. Anything further? All right. While Rob is here, we'll go ahead and call for the question on F9. And I'll entertain a motion that we, we support the project to build a road adjacent to the Readiness Center. And we authorize, we authorize both sides, the city and the Upstate County Development Authority, to begin the prep work toward this project. All right, we have a motion by Mary, we have a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. If the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we will be in touch with the nuts and bolts in the future.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Take care, Rob. Rhett, you are here this evening representing Congressman Mooney. You did, you did not indicate that you wanted to speak, but do you have anything to bring us?
Well, several members of your staff, thank you, Mr. Mayor, several members of your staff did attend the Congressman's Public Safety Grant Workshop today. And I hope they did receive some really good information. There was some good information coming from all, all groups, USDA Rural, also the Department of Justice and also FEMA. And Kelly was telling me that she watched as well. There's some interesting developments on the FEMA side that will be making sure your fire department knows, you know, they, they didn't get out all the money that they were supposed to have, so they're going to have another period of folks being able to, with now only the combination, but the volunteer fire departments on the COVID issue, being able to get some more funds on that. But I just want to thank your staff for participating and also thank you all for allowing us to give you the information. And as always, I sound like a broken record with them, that, you know, the Congressman's always willing to help any way he can. And when, when you identify a grant, you just let the office know and we have a scope of it and they'll get you a layer of support to go with the application. But thank you for allowing me to speak. It's good to see all of y'all healthy. And if we can do anything for you, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay, we have a guest caller on the line, Melissa Dougherty. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Well, I appreciate the time. I was definitely not expecting to get in on the meeting tonight. I basically just wanted to address an ordinance that had passed in the 90s regarding skateboarding and basically criminalizing the same. I would like to have it listed. Of course, a skate park would be ideal, however, I understand with the times right now, that that's definitely a little much with the pandemic and whatnot. And definitely don't have my cards on the table ready to address any kind of park level kind of talk, but would definitely like to do something like that in the future. But for right now, I would just like that ordinance, it's actually ordinance number 268 of the City of Buchanan, just to be reviewed and possibly amended to where skateboarding is not illegal. I feel like times have changed a lot since the 90s and that the ordinance was created without the use of technology and internet and things that we have today that can make skateboarding skateboarding a lawful activity that would be healthy and a good outlet for our youth that are lacking things to do around here.
We do have City Attorney Tom O'Neill here in the room with us. It appears to me that the ordinance that is on the books now is really only concerning of our commercial districts. It's not, it doesn't really read that it's truly illegal across the entire city. It's just in the commercial area. And Tom, Tom could speak to this. I'll, I'll just, I'll defer to him for specifics.
And I need to take my mask off because I'm just too muffled and I don't think I'd be heard over the phone if I left it on. So the ordinance only prohibits skateboarding on, in the commercial section of Main Street on the sidewalks. Skateboarding is not illegal citywide. It certainly, council's prerogative to revisit that policy, but you know, every ordinance is put into place for, you know, there's a reason why this ordinance was adopted back in the day and then it's council, it'd be up to council to determine whether or not circumstances have changed significantly. But I think it's important to make sure we get our facts right on this. And skateboarding is not illegal in Buchanan. It is only prohibited in the downtown Main Street Central Commercial District on the sidewalks. So I just kind of limit it, limit it to that. The, the idea that skateboarding is illegal in all of Buchanan is just not, not the case.
And I appreciate that. However, the sport itself kind of does call for, I don't even know, I don't want to argue because I definitely understand like Main Street, I get it. You can't see when there's cars parked, someone could get hurt. But like places like Stockard Youth, there, it's a youth center and it's in the city limits. So they could get in trouble and face a criminal fine, let alone having their skateboard taken from them.
Um, I don't
Which, in a, in the reality, creates a bad thing for years and cops. Because if they're going to run from the cops to keep their board, they're not going to go to cops when they see drug use happening in the park. They're going to be scared, they're going to get their board taken.
Well, I, I just, I don't think I agree
The drug problem we have in this county is a lot worse.
I, I just don't think I agree that, that skateboarding is prohibited at Stockard in, on the Stockard property. If it's on, on the sidewalk is one thing, but in, in Stockard itself, on the Stockard grounds, I, I don't agree that it's prohibited there.
Has there been any
I just explained Stockard because it's within city limits and it is the youth center, but there is no place for them to skate at Stockard.
Well, that's a different issue. I know we're talking
Other than the sidewalk.
Well, a number of years ago, the city put $35,000 in building a skate park over near Stockard. And unfortunately, it sort of died from use over a three or four year period.
Have there any, been any cases of skateboarders being given citations?
That's a question for Chief Gregory.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'll park my head.
Has there been any, any instances that you're aware of, of skateboarders been giving this, having been given a citation?
Um, I believe a friend of my daughter's has actually received one within this summer, which I, that's what actually brought it to my attention because I thought, I'll be honest, I've lived here my whole life. And I thought, I knew that it's been banned in the 90s, but I thought it's been lifted because of the skate park, because we had one at one point in time. But then I don't know whatever happened to the skate park because in my, it got used to where it got taken down and now it's what the fire department parking lot? If I remember correctly where it was?
Matt, do you want to speak?
Where if we can get a skate park on the board, I would love to try to do some kind of grant writing that I could find or fundraising, something, anything I could do to help. I would love to be able to have that opportunity. But I understand that it has to go through the proper channels and proper steps and I just want to make it a little better for our youth around here. I mean, I have four daughters myself that are all preteen and teenagers. Two of them enjoy skateboarding. It is incredibly hard. It takes talent. And it is a sport now. In the 90s, it was, you know, not necessarily considered a sport. It's now in the Olympics.
We have Chief Gregory here. He can, he can help.
I don't want to cause problems for anyone because we have enough going on with the pandemic and all of this. I understand the waste school stuff. It's all crazy right now, but I just wanted to get it on the table and try to get some thoughts on it, really.
We have Chief Gregory here who will make a comment or two, I believe.
While the skateboarding ordinance is still technically on the books, it has been since the late 90s or the mid 90s, I think. And I believe kind of the forerunner into some of the rationale, I came along in the late 90s. So I was an officer here in the midst of, when this ordinance was still fairly new. But to my understanding, I, I believe the, the original rationale behind why the ordinance came to be at the time was there were a lot of destruction of property and other type of issues regarding skateboard use at that time. And I know when it was originally passed into an ordinance throughout the 90s and into the early 2000s even, there were a number of citations that were written in response to that. However, I cannot recall for the longest time when the last skateboarding citation or skateboard was, was seized. I know it's been a number of years. And I say that because I know that years ago, when these citations were written, the common practice would be to take the skateboard, hold the skateboard in our evidence room, and then release the skateboard back to the individual once the fine was paid. And we used to have a, quite a collection of skateboards in our evidence room, which we're always trying to look for ways to not clutter our evidence room. We're always on top of that. And that hasn't been an issue for years and years. I know that myself, speaking of myself and the other officers, we do try to use a lot of discretion, particularly with these types of ordinances. And just from my own experience, and again, speaking of when it was originally passed, originally an issue, through the years, I have seen an evolution of skateboard use. And we don't have near the problems with those who utilize skateboards like we did in the 90s when this was a brand new ordinance. And I would venture to say that's probably why we haven't seen as many citations and as many skateboard seizures, because it's using our discretion. It's not something that is, we're getting complaints on, that's grabbing our attention. I've seen kids on a number of occasions skateboarding down, down the side of the road. They weren't harming anybody or didn't have any complaints on them. They were just enjoying the, the day, enjoying their skateboard. I left them alone personally. And I think that's been the case over the years. Again, I can't, I just can't recall the last time a skateboard citation's been written. It's been a while.
And if anything, I think that's just for validation that the ordinance be listed because if that's the case, then why does it need to be there at all?
Let me, let me clarify one thing. I misspoke earlier. The, the ordinance prohibits the use of skateboards in commercially zoned districts, not just the, not just the central downtown, so C1, C2, and C3, just for what it's worth.
Yes.
Just to make sure that
And a criminal fine. I mean, that's the thing, it's criminal.
I just want to make sure that members of the council have that information. Okay.
Did the, did the ordinance say it was a felony?
It's a misdemeanor.
Misdemeanor, okay. It's not, it's not a criminal.
Well, a charge, a criminal charge with a fine of up to $500.
I'm not familiar with
To where my thing is, a cop, and no offense to Chief Matt Gregory, but if a youth is scared that they're going to get their board taken, then they're not going to go to a cop when they need help. To where it creates a bad relationship with the youth and our cops that are supposed to help them. If they see them as the enemy from the get-go because they're skateboarding in a town where they can get a fine of up to $500 and their board taken, let me tell you, some of these boards are $200. It doesn't make them want to be real friendly or, you know, upcoming with information that could be beneficial to our town with drug problems or sexual abuse or some other problem that the kid might have because he likes to skateboard.
If I recall, I think the ordinance was brought about because we had built the skate park and then they, they weren't using it. They were using everything but the skate park. And I think that's what brought the ordinance down.
Now, Pam, the skate park wasn't done until after 2003 or '04 or '05.
But isn't that why we have
And she said the ordinance was 1998.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. I, I think what happened
Ninety-four.
I think what happened, quite frankly, is a lot of the parents and the youth were not using common sense. And they were going in commercial areas skate parking or skateboarding and they were creating problems at that time. And that's one of the reasons why we built the skateboard park. But for some reason, the kids really didn't like to congregate there that much and use it. They'd rather sort of free will down sidewalks. I, I had people skateboarding on the Smith, Smithfield and I don't have a problem with it. I just hope they don't get hurt. Because as you said, it's not an easy sport. I tried to do one in 1987.
But in that, in the regard, it's no harder than mountain biking or anything else that we promote in wild and wonderful West Virginia. I mean, we are about outdoor recreational physical activity. We promote snowboarding and skateboarding on snow. We promote skiing, mountain biking. We have the Upstate County Trail System, which is awesome.
Just to make sure that the
We need that stuff.
Correct information is out there. Skateboarding is perfectly legal in any residential area of the city.
Right. And it's the same thing. I mean, we promote bicycling in Buchanan. We just don't allow, bicycling can't take place on sidewalks on Main Street.
That's not what
And it's just, it is, it's for everyone's safety to be considered. So, I mean, just, just what
But bikes are getting taken away and they're not getting fined, which that's, the criminal part of it is what bothers me. It's not, I just don't like the whole criminal aspect to it. The fine, and not to mention the cops, they've got bigger fish to fry right now than our kids riding a skateboard.
Didn't Chief Gregory just say that he's had any tickets written or anything for skateboarders? Is that correct? So we're just beating the bush here. We can take a look at it, Mayor.
Well, the ordinance is still in place.
Well, just, just for a housekeeping note, an ordinance cannot just be stricken from, from the books. In order for an ordinance to be, an ordinance can be modified, it can be changed, it can be replaced, but it cannot be just erased. So for any, for any changes or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just merely pointing out just the due process that must be followed in order to make any change to anything in our community. We can't just eliminate it. We, it would have to be modified, added to, or replaced
Right.
entirely. That's, that's what we would have to do.
Well, I suggest we look at this and review it and we, if we need to modify it or revise it, let's do it.
Okay. I think that's what we, we, we can't, we can't solve the problem tonight because it's not on the agenda for something that we can legally take action on to, to vote on. But we appreciate you calling in and sharing your concerns with us. The council has heard your, your concerns and we will, we'll take a look at the language and see if there are some changes that we can make to it. But, but as we noted, we cannot just eliminate the ordinance. We're not, we're not allowed to do that by law. We would have to modify, add to, or totally replace. So we'll work with our, we'll work with the community, we'll work amongst ourselves as council, our city attorney, our, our city police chief, and we'll try to come up with maybe some modified language for, for the ordinance that will perhaps update it. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it sounds great. I appreciate everyone's time and I definitely appreciate just letting me speak tonight because I understand it can't be done overnight and I understand it needs looked at. And I do appreciate, and I also understand we're in a pandemic, so it's crazy. And I do apologize for the timing. However, I was just surprised that it was still around myself to where I definitely wanted to bring it to city council's attention. And I do appreciate your time and effort into it.
I think the council, when they did this ordinance, I wasn't involved with it, but I don't think they meant to criminalize the person
Trying to take that away.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Dougherty. We appreciate it. Have a nice evening and we'll, we'll, we'll get to work on this sometime soon for some better, better wording, okay?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having me. Be safe.
Okay. I believe that we've, we don't have any other, do we have any other guests on the line, Mr. Recorder?
Anyone else, Callie? I don't believe so.
No, we have no more guests, Mayor, Recorder.
Okay, thank you, Callie.
All right. Callie, well, while we have you on the line, you are up first. We'll get into our Department of Board reports. We have our information and coordinator, Cali Cronin-Sams.
All right, thank you so much. You have your, my report and your packet there. And I have the posts that we've had on Facebook and social media as well as to our website. And I'll just touch on some of those. Wanted to share one from this morning that's really getting a lot of views. And thank Alice Teetz, who works in the front of City Hall, of course, for sharing it with me. A young boy Connor, and I'm sorry, I don't know the pronunciation of Connor's last name, but apparently really enjoyed sharing Coke and a snack with our waste collection staff on that route, on his route. He's a young, always looked to be maybe three years old. And that's really getting a lot of views. And he considers those garbage truck drivers to be heroes. And really appreciate Allison, Connor's mom, sharing that. It's a great photo and people are enjoying that. And I'll just take the opportunity to thank our waste collection staff for what they do. It's often not an easy job and in all kinds of weather. So we enjoyed getting that out today and a lot of people are enjoying to see that online as well. In addition to that, we have Stockard Youth and Community Center is hiring after school program assistants. And in addition, the water plant is looking for a water plant operator. So we have a couple of job postings up on our website. And so I definitely wanted to let folks know about that. We had shared information about our COVID-19 response survey. That is wrapped up now and Josh Trent is working on his final reports on both the COVID survey as well as the Riverwalk survey. So stay tuned for that next week at Consolidated Public Works Board. And let's see. We shared Madison Walmsley being the Poundstone Memorial Scholarship winner. And we also, we conducted the virtual tour on Monday with the Chamber of Commerce of the theater and that went well. And then all through this week, at the lunch hour, Monday through today, we've had events associated with Riverfest online. We had a story time at Gibson Library. We played the nice video that Ben Davis did of the water plant as well as the DEP's video of the watershed and the early warning monitoring grant that we got, that Jay had worked so hard on also. And let's see. Moving on over. And grants, I did participate, as Rhett had noted, in the Mooney's Grant Workshop today. Did learn about the AFG, the FEMA's AFG program. Assistance of Firefighters. Will have a supplemental coming out later this year. And I forwarded that on to JB, who may have also been on that, uh, but for PPE needs for fire departments. So, I've shared that information with him. Getting our July CARES Act grant submitted, uh, some reporting for the Volunteer Center. Still wrapping up our PATH project. And, let's see. I think that's about it from me, unless you have questions.
Any questions or comments for Kelly? All right. Thanks, Kelly, very much. You have a nice evening, good weekend. All right. We have our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. I believe he is in the building. There he is.
Wow. Look at that, just appears.
The backstage effect.
Before Jerry, before Jerry begins his report, um, he asked me, uh, Jay Holland is also here to give part of a report with him, if we could move a few items up from, while they're here so that Jay, uh, could, can exit. Um, let's, let's move, under Jerry's report, let's move, uh, the approval for financing for the concrete mixer and silo. We can type team that with AMBI. Um, and then F8, I believe you said, to correct Jerry?
Yeah, the discussion, discussion on City Hall.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll do both of those under your report. Uh, so take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Jay really appreciates that. Um, concrete mixer and silo, uh, we have ordered them, and again, we're waiting to approve the financing, of course, tonight. But, uh, one thing I will mention, so I attended the, uh, the virtual meeting of the, uh, West Virginia LTAP Advisory Board last week, and I had mentioned what we were doing here in Buckhannon, and, uh, got an overwhelming response about, uh, folks wanting to come and, and see this thing in action when we get it, and about, uh, how unique it was that we were gonna have that capability. So, uh, again, that's, that's a lot of folks from other cities and, and the, uh, West Virginia DOH, so. Um, I have nothing new to report under the street department. We're still on the same projects we were, we reported on last time. The sewer department, Crew One was working, still working on the north side. The crews laid pipe out to about Smitty Suzuki now. The 33 West Extension, South Side Jeff Allen. Jeff Allen started testing on 81720. They made a repair between pump station, the pump station, and the first manhole. Plan operations, testing, tests, tests are all within normal limits. The maintenance crew, sewer department had a leak on, at the Vicksburg Station, pump station, and the leak was in the discharge piping. We would like to thank Kelly and his crew for their help and for loaning us materials to complete the job. The maintenance crew replaced check valves at East Main and Vicksburg Pump Station. Crew Two finished, uh, up Zeno Street, assisted in maintenance crew on Vicksburg Pump Station leak. They completed a sewer repair on McCartney Drive, laying about 84 feet of pipe, and installed a cleanout on 16 Dump Street. CSO's, uh, Sam is working on long-term control plan. Water Crew is finishing up maintenance repairs at the dam and will start painting on the exterior of the Tenerton tank. They rented a lift to be able to do that work. There's nothing new to report under waste. That brings us down to engineering, and since Jay is here, he can speak for himself.
Okay. From, Mr. Holland.
All right. Thanks for having me here tonight. Uh, I'm just gonna update you, uh, quickly on, on what's going on in engineering, and then I was gonna see if Mayor would allow us to move items.
He did. He already got that. We already took care of that.
So, all right, from the engineering side, always busy, but, um, the major items I'm just gonna talk about. I'm continuing to work on the EPA's AWI, which is a, uh, risk and resiliency plan that's required by the EPA. Um, all water departments have to do it. If not, it could affect future funding. It seems that all these grants now are tied into restrictions. So this risk and resiliency plan I'm working on as time permits. I'm briefly gonna touch on the generator projects. They are complete from my side. I am just waiting for FEMA to give me the go-ahead to advertise those for bid and get those projects completed. Uh, I'm in contact with them weekly because I continually remind them that we are losing a great construction season. But FEMA doesn't work at the pace that we do, so that'll be the last you hear from me on that, those two grants until, uh, we actually get to bid the projects. Uh, the water department is working on, uh, the early warning monitoring systems at both sites. There's some issues with the, uh, two different equipments talking to each other, and they were down here earlier this week. But one set of, of software and a hardware is not speaking with the other, so we've got a little bit of bugs to work out. The ACP project, I, I bring that up because in speaking with the former project manager, everybody knows that it's no longer, um, a, a, a project, but there were some loose ends hanging out there. Uh, one of them was approximately $6,400 left remaining in the project funds. They have given us the green light to use that. However, the water department sees fit. Yes, it's only $6,400, but, uh, I believe that that money has already been earmarked for a rental lift so that they could paint the Tenerton Water Storage Tank, or Kelly may be buying some, uh, other equipment that's needed. And it's also going to allow them to begin switching the customers on the Brushy Fork Road off of the old water line onto the new one. Because we couldn't do any movement on that water line, the new water line, until they did their hydrostatic testing and pressure and, and giving their, uh, Dominion's contractor a thousand gallons a minute so that they could do some hydrostatic testing. But all that's gone, it's off the board. So, um, Kelly has already started, um, lining up the crews to begin switching customers over. The Gateway West project, it continues. It's probably about 50% physically complete. And, and what I mean by that is they're at the halfway point. Believe it or not, they are halfway through with the project. Money-wise, about 35%. Uh, Jerry touched briefly on the Quarter H project. Um, I think he talked about sewer. The water line has been tested both hydrostatically and for water quality, and both of them have passed. So if there were customers to be served, we could provide them water service. Uh, the pounds, Elizabeth J. Pinky Poundstone Trail Extension Number Four. Uh, last year, about this time, I, I asked you all for a support resolution, which is in here tonight, for engineering and design. That was approved, and I actually have a site meeting with, uh, the DOH in two weeks to walk the project for the design. What's in the packet tonight is a resolution uh, supporting an 80/20 split so that we can, uh, begin construction activities if they approve this project. What is nice about this is that the DOH is now, rather than do it, design and build all in one year, they split the design up for one year, then construction over a two-year period, which leads to where I'm going with it. If you get the design, they are gonna give you more than likely the construction money. So this is just a formality. It's a $248,000 project, I believe, and the specifics are in there, but we've gotta provide 20% of that, and we can talk about that if you all would like. And then this is just a friendly reminder. It's been in the paper, it's on the website. The Route 20 Railroad Crossing will be closed this Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. It may get moved back further if the weather doesn't allow them. But just please remember, if you're planning on chopping north and south of the railroad crossings, please take Morton Avenue or Ligon addition because you're not gonna get across there. No vehicles, no bicycles, and no pedestrians. And with that, I'm gonna give everybody a little gift here so that we can discuss what I'm gonna discuss next about the roof.
While you're here, you wanna go ahead and, uh, we wanna go ahead and, and work on the resolution for, uh, the Poundstone Trail?
Yes, I, I don't have a copy in front of me, but I'll still.
I think our city reporter does.
Okay.
That's the original that we would need to.
Listen, I will not mess it up. Yes, see how I typed it? But it just, um, you know, I won't read the whole thing, but it's Resolution 202009 from the City Council of Buckhannon, formally offering its support for the construction phase of Elizabeth J. Pinky Poundstone Riverwalk Trail Extension Number Four Transportation Alternatives Project. And it lists a lot of whereas. The total project, I told you wrong, is $240,785.89. Unlike last year, when we were, uh, we're still a distressed county, but the DOH did away with that. It was 100% funding for the design. This year, it's 80/20. The Federal Highways Administration will provide 80%, which is $192,628.71 of those construction monies. And the City of Buckhannon will supply the other $48,157.19. Uh, the reason I brought this today, the grant is complete, short of this, and a couple of support letters that Kelly is helping me, uh, retrieve from our, our business community partners. This, uh, application has to be submitted no later than September 8th. Again, I'm finished, except for the signing of this resolution upon your all's approval, and then getting a couple more support letters. I'll send that out as quickly as possible. And if anybody has any questions, where it's gonna go, it's gonna go from the Poe Bridge, where the current walking trail ends. It's gonna parallel the, um, railroad tracks until we get to, is that Preston, Jerry? No. Yes, it is Preston. We'll take a right-hand turn. That'll bring us to Wood Street at the water treatment plant. Then it'll take a left-hand turn, head towards the Old Armory, and go down Wood Street until Montegalia Street. So it's about 1,900 feet, even though I didn't apply for the, the lights in this phase because it, the magic number used to be 150. Now it's 200 to 250. I wanted to stay under that 250 threshold. So I took the lights out of the project. I'll apply for them at a later date. But, uh, we will put the conduit and the wire in place with this project so that the next time, I'll just apply for the same streets, uh, same streetlights that you see on Gateway East and West, and we'll install those. But that's what the project into eight-foot-wide combination concrete and asphalt, uh, concrete will be where the driveways are. Uh, but if anybody has any questions, this is gonna be an extension of the, the Riverwalk Trail.
So this, this is an approval of spending $48,000?
Yes. When, when, once we get, uh, uh, the, the notice to proceed and the, the approval from the DOH, they will contribute the $192,000 or whatever it was at the top of page two, and we will supply the other 20%. And, and I know that, I think, uh, CJ is, even though we don't have that earmarked for this year, I wouldn't anticipate receiving notice to proceed and allocations of fund until July 1 of next year.
It's my understanding that's in kind, though, labor. We can use that.
We can use that as in kind.
So that'll take a bunch, that'll take quite a bit of that $48,000.
You know, our, our labor we can use because, uh, and hopefully, uh, uh, the, the little portion of sidewalk that is on the DOH right away at Marion Street, we would have to use, uh, uh, central supplies concrete because it is DOH-approved where, you know, and then we, Jerry and I will be working on various mixed designs, and, and we'll have to do some trials and, uh, uh, break tests. But, you know, we would hope to use our concrete truck and our, our own for city streets and city sidewalks.
And actually, we have, once, I mean, we can, we can submit to the state.
Yeah, once we get one.
That's not.
Right. You know, once we have a mixed design that meets their requirements as far as strength and, and water content, water cement ratio, air content, once we meet their specifications and we, we prove to them through a, a series of breaks that, uh, the concrete is just as good as anybody else's, we can submit and have that approved. But, you know, those are the little hiccups, but I, I don't see any activities on this until July 1 of 2021, so that'll fit into the budget nicely. But just in case they're feeling nice, and that we get it early, we, we would have to contribute that, uh, money that I indicated there, CJ.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? This is a, oh, Jack.
So moved.
Oh, what, okay.
My question.
Sounds good to me. All right.
Way to go, Jack.
So.
Hold on, Jack.
We have a motion on the table, uh, to accept Resolution 2020-09 as presented by our city engineer, Jay Holland. We have a second by Council Lady Albal. Uh, this is a resolution, so we'll need to have a roll, roll call vote, but I'll go ahead and just call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign motion, or for, uh, against, motion has carried. Uh, I'll defer to the recorder to read off, uh, the roll call.
Mrs. Albal?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckloo?
Yes.
Mr. Rylance?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rigor?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes. Mayor Skinner?
Yes, sir.
And Adams.
Okay, before, and then, and then the resolution for the DOH requires that everybody sign it. So before we break up tonight, if you all could just make sure that you sign that, I can scan it and attach it to the application tomorrow.
Sure.
All right, and now the presents you gave us.
Now, now the presents. This is a, Jerry, what item is it? F?
This is F8.
F8. This is F8. This concerns the roof above the main part of City Hall, the original post office part. It's four pictures. The first one, you know, just like the little note says, this is what the roof at the parapet wall and the roof should look like. It should, it's a perpendicular wall beating the, the roof, and the, uh, single rubber membrane is tight to the wall and the roof. It forms a 90-degree angle. If you turn to page two, this is over the lobby and the, uh, awards case just outside the utility side. That is what the roof looks like. There are three major tears there. The, the rubber membrane has come off of the wall and has come off the roof decking, and it's sitting at a 30, 35-degree angle. It's kinda like a trampoline. It's, it's a real, you know, it's still intact, but it's come away from the, the roof and the wall. This is due to the age of it, which is probably 35, uh, years old at least. I think AMBI, uh, was gonna say that it was early 80s, uh, mid 80s that this roof was, uh, installed.
Late 80s.
So, I mean, you know, we're, we're looking at a 30-year-old roof that had a warranty and a, um, membrane life of 15 to 20 years. So we've gotten our time out of that. Uh, if you turn to the third page, this is the worst of the three tears. Um, as you can see, you could, you can read, it's about 15 to 18 inches in length. It's at the wall and, um, roof intersection, but you can reach in there. We felt water, standing water, and we also, uh, there were some, some, uh, beesnests in there, and, and the wood underlaying, the wood decking, was, was moist. And, and, and so that's the existing condition. was moist, and so that's the existing condition. We won't get to part the fourth page until just a minute, so I'd asked a roofing contractor to come up on August the seventh, to look at the situation, and he gave us two options for a temporary repair, because I explained that, you know, we didn't budget for this, you know, we may have to shuffle some things around, and at the time, we were thinking, if we could get something to get us through the winter, what would it cost to make temporary repairs to this roof? So he gave us two options, it was to patch in place as it is, do not tear the seam, and I'm going to explain the seam, and then that'll tie in the fourth picture later, do not try to do anything else to the roof, except patch the holes that are really, really bad, and, you know, it's those three that you saw on page two, and that was going to be about five thousand dollars. If you would turn to the last page, there's a little red line, and what that red line represents is the seam where the wall decking, or the wall membrane meets the roof membrane, and then they overlap the wall, they bring the roof membrane up to it, they're not touching, they're not connected, but then they put this splice piece in, and that's what you see on either side of the red line. Their better temporary fix is, that they recommend, is cutting the rubber membrane along that red line, that would allow the roof membrane to flap, flat against the wall, and lay back down on the roof, once they figure out how much of a repair patch they would need, then they would adhere that to the roof, so that it forms that ninety-degree angle you saw in the first picture, and then they would make the necessary corner and cornice repairs. It's about a ten thousand dollar repair. So those are your options at the time, and then I said, well, if you all don't mind, could you give us a budgetary worst-case scenario to replace the whole roof, if you all decide that maybe that's prudent and we need to do it? I will say that if it's not done this year, it's definitely going to be an item July one next year, that we have to replace the roof on the original post office portion of City Hall. So they prepared a cost estimate for me, and I received it today, without, and the thing about it is, given the age, we're going to have to do an asbestos inspection to determine if there's any asbestos up there. That's going to be about a three to five thousand dollars, it can be done locally. The test result, that the samples would be taken here, they would be sent off, and then they would come back, hopefully they're negative, and we wouldn't have to worry about that, but to replace the whole roof over City Hall, just the original part, not the part that we're in now, is going to be between, and this is a budgetary, is going to be between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And, you know, that is a twenty-year warranty, they will warranty that for twenty years, it's a single ply membrane, just like what's up there. The reason that's got a couple high prices in there is because they noticed, just like I noticed, the wet wooden underlayment, and if they have to get into that and replace the wood underlayment, it's going to drive the price up a little bit more. And so I said, well, if that's okay, we have to do that, what is your time schedule? Because I said, I need at least two weeks for the asbestos inspection, I need two weeks for advertising and bid, we're already at September twentieth, how long is the lead time on your materials? They are two to three weeks out on the materials, which puts us in the middle of October, they need three weeks to put it down of no rain, well, that's not going to happen in October, but they said that we are up against the limits, you know, of this year, because all the roofing contractors that are reputable and bonded, you know, all the roofing contractors are busy right now doing their projects, trying to get them in before the wet weather gets here. He said, you can try to bid it, it may happen, it may not, because if it starts raining, you know, even if it's for two or three days, they get to start over. And so when I heard that, I said, well, I'll present that to the board, see what they want to do. The more information I gathered over the past couple weeks, I know it's an extra ten thousand dollars on top of the budgetary numbers, and again, remember that he's not giving us their best price, because this has got to go out the competitive bid and stuff like that, so I think the overall roof replacement cost will be cheaper, but it may be back up to that number that I just gave you, because we need to make at least one of the two temporary fixes, and I recommend, and I believe Jerry would concur, that we make the ten thousand dollar repair, where they slice it, let everything lay flat against the wall and the roof, and then they make the good seam patch, temporary patch, and then that will buy us the nine to ten months that we need. I can have this out on the street in March of twenty-one, open up bids in April, and then, you know, the dry weather will be here. If that's the route we choose to go, do I believe that that temporary patch will get us to July one of next year, when a new budget goes into effect? I believe it will, but that's, I would recommend we put it off until next year sometime, be it spring or summer, depending on which budget year you want to put it in, but we do need to make one of the temporary patches as quickly as possible, before the wet weather really gets here.
Jerry, when you do the temporary patch, will they be able to determine at that point in time, how much damage is done?
They can get a peek of it, Dave, you know, because that's what they said, where it's happening is right where the wood deck starts, so then when they, when they make that cut and roll it back, they can get a look at it, Jerry and I can get a look at it, and we will have a better idea what's going to be required for the, you know, the new roof replacement at that time. The roof that we're over now, it has steel joists in it, when they did this in ninety-eight, there were steel joists put in here, those are wooden joists, and they said that they are showing signs of dampster and moisture, and, you know, the weather's got in there.
So you're recommending the ten thousand dollars?
I am recommending.
Jay, I'm looking at a figure here, plus or minus eleven thousand.
Where do you see that?
Right here, page four, top of it.
Oh, okay, it's supposed to be ten. The temporary repair to get the city through to July one should be ten thousand. It was a five thousand dollar and a ten thousand, ninety-eight hundred.
Okay. Jack, do you have a comment?
I have several. I feel like I've lived this nightmare many years in a row. Is this a flat roof that we're talking about?
It's got ridges in it that direct water to the outside exterior wall, but yes, it's a flat roof.
Well, obviously, we, if we have a heavy snow, and we don't patch that, a heavy snow and turning ice, it's going to push through.
Yes, it is.
That's a disaster, but here's the thing, and I've participated in several school remodels, and they all had the flat roof, you know.
Yep, I've been there.
But instead of having to abate, why not put in a slope, you know, put in the foam slopes, whatever, gables, whatever.
They have them in there, they're there. These pictures don't show them.
But abatement could potentially cost you as much as the roof. Can you not just?
Encapsulate.
Encapsulate it and put in a new roof?
Well, because.
And help to frame costs.
I don't know, they don't know, they couldn't tell from the age of the roof whether it was glued down or just laid down, so if it was glued down, and depending on the year, early to mid-eighties is more, you know, has more of a chance of being asbestos-containing material, rather than mid to late, because they were outlawed in the early eighties, asbestos-containing materials. So, I mean, if they can get up there and determine, the tests come back and it's negative, then we don't have to worry about, you know, some asbestos costs, which could be anywhere between twelve and seventeen thousand dollars.
I think that's.
Well, it has to do with what they find, you know.
Right.
What's under there, you don't, you certainly don't want to encapsulate moisture that's already there.
Again, I cannot give away their prices that I have in here, but let's just say it's between twelve and eighteen thousand dollars for asbestos abatement, plus or minus. I mean, it could be more, I hope not, but I mean, they do have the, I don't know if it's wood-framed gables up there, or styrofoam gables, you know, it's, I was still in high school at the time, so I don't know what was up there, but.
You might have been up there.
You can see the, you can see the gables, and they were meant to direct, but where that, where these, this is on the east Main Street side, that wind has gotten under there, not only has the rubber membrane shrunk and pulled away, but when the wind got under there, that only exasperated the problem, and it just started flapping, and it just, it started at my office, and it worked its way halfway, well, over the main doors at City Hall. That's a large area that we're talking. The total square footage is just under five thousand square feet, so that gives you an idea of what it costs per square foot of single rubber membrane. There is no ballast, it's not designed for that, with wood trusses, I'm sure that it couldn't handle the extra weight. I mean, you know, if we wanted to do a structural analysis and have ballast put up there, you're looking probably at a whole roof replacement, so I'm not recommending that. I mean, if a single ply membrane just laid down, got us thirty-five years, I would hope that we could get another thirty to thirty-five years.
I might mention that when we built the budgets in in March, that I built in there to get some doors and foundation repairs done, so I could offset that right now for the repair of the roof, because that's more important at the moment. We have some holes in the doors, so whatever we do, we're probably going to have to look at putting some funds back in this building, because I've delayed those repairs for about three years now. And I need doors, foundation, and now I need a roof, so we're going to have to look at this building for sure next year.
Ambi, you do a lot, can you not do roofs?
Yeah. Well, as Jay had said, the five thousand dollar repair, it's contingent on if we don't get a snow load, just like Jack said, because it's going to tear in the same exact places on that, along that parapet wall, because it is so hot, that that snow load will tear that roof apart again. So, you know, I think the five thousand dollar repair, I would center, if you were going to go that route, we'd just go up there, send our crews up there, and say, little patch over, you know, because you're just going to be as well off. I think in order to get us through, I'm like Jay, that you're going to have to go with the ten thousand dollar repair.
I agree, and I think we've heard, I would entertain a motion, I think we, okay, all right, good deal. We're going to accept your recommendation to do ten thousand dollars to get us through the winter, and then we will revisit this.
Hold on a second.
Albal.
Rylands.
Okay. Albal Rylands, yeah, and then we'll revisit this as we get closer to the budget and into the next fiscal year.
If it happened a month or two earlier, we could probably get it in this season, but I'm just, I would rather err to the side of caution, I don't want to expose that roof in the wet season, and then in the snow, I would just rather.
You could do more structural damage, would set us further back.
I'd hate for it not to be able to bid the whole job properly, too, so this will get us hopefully through.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Get to it, Jack.
Paul. Paul, hold on. Thomas has the floor.
Yeah, I think when Ambi said that she has the money that she would transfer from the repairs that she wants for the doors and the foundations, so, and that she has waited about three years to help us out, I really think that we should take ten or fifteen grand from our rainy day fund, and do the repairs for the foundation, the doors, and the roof, because I think, you know, it's important to keep your repair maintenance going the way it should be.
Is that where you take it from, Ambi?
No.
How would you handle it?
I would prefer that you let me, let us pay this bill, see what it's going to be. We have some money coming in from cares, we have some B and O coming in, so I'd rather you let me get one job done and see if I can find it, rather than pull it from our rainy day, I think we might be able to find it.
I just don't want you to push the free fire.
I appreciate that.
I concur with you, Dave, I mean, you know, the doors and the frames do need to be addressed, because they are not getting any better, and especially the one down at the, down at the bottom of the.
Well, I look at how much money we brought in from the sales tax in the first six months, and it's more than what we anticipated. So I do think we have the capability, as you suggested, you got other things you can look at, but I just, I hate to hold off an hard apple, because that's not a good thing to do. I will contact them tomorrow, they'll send you the proposal. Oh, sorry.
Do we have any further discussion? Thank you, Dave, for that, and I agree with you, I mean, this building does seem to be made a priority, it is our city's house, so. Hearing for the need for no more discussion, I'll call for the question to accept City Engineer Jay Hollen's proposal of a ten thousand dollar fix. We will, we have the motion on the table from Albal and Rylands, we'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed, motion has carried unanimously.
Okay, now I can say that now that we've elected to do that, I will get that proposal from them, hopefully I can get it in front of the mayor tomorrow, we can get it executed, and I'll fax it, or I'll scan it to them, and we can, they can start ordering the materials, because it does have a two to three week lead time.
Okay. Just let me know when we've got it ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have your earlier report, engineer's report?
I can give you a clean copy, but yes.
There you go.
I scratched out some of the things that Jerry already talked about.
You need us when we're in the tree.
Okay. All right, anything else, Jenny? You good?
I am good.
Okay.
Hey, Jenny?
Yes, sir.
Can you email this to me?
Or any, you know, yes, I can.
Do you want my copy of this?
No. Okay. All right, so in blending into, while we still have Jerry and then Ambi getting into her report, we do have the financing for the concrete mixer, while, like I said, while Jerry's still here, and while you're getting into your report, if you two want to talk about that real quick, we can go ahead and dispense with F seven as well, since I believe we have a clear direction as to where we're, the way we're going to go, so.
Want me to say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so you tasked me to do, get financing for the concrete truck, got last meeting, and I sought some bank information, and the, got four quotes, it's for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for the, I don't know about the Fury concrete bachelor truck and silo. That's for a six-year term. I sent that to the banks, and I asked them to be sure that they, any loans or borrowing of money, that we have the non-appropriation clause in it. The rate that I got was the best, was from the First Community Bank for two-point-three-seven-five percent, the others quoted up to about two-nine-nine, so they were all a little above that. So they were all really good quotes, but First Community at two-point-three-seven-five percent, six years for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Second, third, fourth.
Now, let's just keep parliamentary procedure. Okay, I appreciate the speed in which we're going, I do, I do very much, okay.
I can write this back, guys.
I'll tell you, all right, so we've talked about this the last three, maybe even four meetings, I believe, we've got our direction, we're going to go financing-wise, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mrs. Buckloo, is there any further discussion?
It saves a lot of money.
It does.
Talked about a lot in the water board meeting.
Yep.
And I think Jerry needs to be commended again for bringing this to the council.
Yep, yep, I agree, I agree. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, like sign, motion has carried unanimously, thank you. All right, your report.
Okay, so I'll give you the balances for your enterprise funds, water board, and this is for the balances July thirty-first, money market, water board, money market checking a hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine sixty-eight, your CDs nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, four seventy-six. Sanitary board money market checking six hundred and ninety-three, nine ninety-eight, CDs two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one ninety, waste collection money market checking six hundred and fourteen thousand, six seventy, and their CD is fifty-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars. And really, the rest of my report's pretty, pretty simple. We've been working on, I worked on several, the entire office worked on several HR matters throughout the time since the last meeting, involving COVID, unemployment, finishing up, getting documentation into the insurance, police civil service testing, roof issues, financial statements, working on them with Richard Trent, financing quotes for the concrete truck, getting information ready for some grants to get submitted, to get reimbursed for. General office operations are going well, we did begin the shut-offs in July for non-payment of watering utility bills. I was contacted by the governor's office, or not the governor's office, West Virginia Rural Water on behalf of the governor's office about any balances due and delinquent accounts, and what we had in there from March to the time they asked me last week, in delinquent accounts, because I think they were trying to see if there's any cares money they could find to help utilities. And basically, we've done pretty well for this time period, and now we're beginning the shut-offs, and so I gave her my balances, I think it was around twenty thousand for sewer, and around, I think it was fifteen thousand for water and delinquent accounts. So I told her it didn't seem like it was too bad, and she said that's what she has kind of noticed throughout the state, that people were in general paying their bills, she have a few, but in general, they were paying their bills. Then we have, just want to remind people, we have, we're advertising for a water plant operator, anybody that might be interested in that position, we have that on our Facebook, or you can come to City Hall and pick up an application and a job description. In your bills to be approved, there's several items in there that's worth noting. We submitted fifteen thousand dollars to Upper County Development Authority for the first half of fiscal year budget that was approved, go to them. Eighteen hundred to Lowe's for drywall for the theater, ten thousand to Shallow Creek Kennels, that's for the K nine unit that we're getting ready to have a trainer with. Sixty-two thousand for the capital lighting and supply for streetlights, poles for the Gateway West program, Central Supply seventeen hundred dollars for Gateway West, Buy Water for more claims funding, it was eleven thousand, nine hundred, the Airport Authority seventy-five hundred for their first half of the fiscal year budget that was approved from General Fund, and five thousand to Country Roads Transit, their first half of the budget that was approved for them. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. All right.
Motion approved, or do we?
I'm sorry.
Motion approved.
Yes. We do need, we will approve Ambi's financial report, we have a motion from Mr. Thomas to have a second, second by Mrs. Albal, no further discussion is needed, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed, motion carries. Okay, our Chief of City Police, Matthew Gregory, good to see you here in person.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Been a while.
Yeah. Where's your file at? Got that in my office, I think I'll leave it there, thanks. Just a few things to update our council tonight, we continue to work on Kalia. As I mentioned last time, we'd underwent a mock assessment of our files, and really spent the bulk of the summer in response to the suggestions and recommendations that came as a result of the mock assessment, a lot of really good feedback was had by that. We are now, Kalia just issued a, another update to its standards manual, and this actually marks the sixth manual change since we enrolled in twenty eighteen. So each time the manual changes, we have to change with it as well, even though we're in the initial assessment. So in addition to the mock assessment, we are now preparing changes in response to the manual change. Most of the changes in the current standards manual version really probably comes as no shock at the forefront of what involves much of policing in the news today, obviously is use of force issues, so that's really where the majority of the standards changes are, just a quick reflection of that, a couple of initiatives that are now part of the standards manual, and therefore. the standards manual and therefore something that we must comply with, or things like duty to intervene. If an officer happens to see a misuse of force or violation of policy, we have to have a duty for them to intervene and report that to supervisors. We have that already. It was already part of our old policies. It's just something we're going to have to just transition over to the new manual. A couple of other examples is an outright express ban on chokeholds. And so we will make sure that our policy reflects that. That wasn't something that we regularly practiced. Our use of force only allowed us to utilize what we were trained on. We're not trained in those types of things, haven't been. So this is just an express statement that we have to have in place for that particular standard. There's a few others, a number of things released in this edition that was a little more involved than past revisions. So I anticipate spending a little bit of time just in response to this. Mayor, I know that I talked about the last meeting needing a policy review committee. As I finished, I have finished up the mock assessment and anticipate response to the manual revisions. Really still on track and would like to see sometime, maybe just right after Labor Day. And I'll work with three, so on maybe a couple of options out there just to get something together. That will allow us to finalize everything from all the changes, not just the mock, but the manual revisions and some of the other things that we have recognized just through day-to-day operations with a couple tweaks to some policies that we'll get in place in September. I'll push that out to the officers in anticipation of staying on track and having the onsite assessment, which is the final phase of the initial assessment sometime in the early spring of '21. And that would put us on track for accreditation in 2021. Continue to work on filling the vacancy in the police department. As Ambi mentioned, we've had civil service testing throughout this summer. And your agenda will reflect the certification of names that civil service has sent to you pursuant to this testing. We are in the process of conducting background investigations on these individuals. And once we have that complete, we will have the full report and application packet ready to, forward to council in preparation for final interviews. Ambi also mentioned that payment, or the first payment on the K-9, we did make our selection of the K-9. It is a Dutch shepherd. It's a male, 15-month-old male named Eros. And so we anticipate our officer who is selected as the handler, William Courtney, will be attending training with K-9 Eros at the end of September. And it's a six-week training program and slated to wrap up sometime in early November. Once that occurs and we have the K-9 unit ready to take to the streets there in early November, we'd anticipate a formal presentation to council at that time. We, just yesterday, in cooperation with Brian Streets, who's the OEM Director here in Upstate County, the police department held a tabletop exercise focusing on what's known as a Black Sky Event. This idea was actually born out of one of our trainings at a recent COLIA conference here in the last year. And we had the entire department there, plus our VIPS coordinator, taking part in this event. And this helps with our COLIA requirements concerning our all hazard plan. And speaking of VIPS, VIPS recently held interviews for new candidates. They welcomed three new members to the ranks. And that actually brings their roster up to 15 members, which is absolutely phenomenal to see that type of willingness in the community to be a part of the police department, part of the city, and willing to give back and help at no cost. And they're, I say this all the time, I can't say it enough, they are an absolute asset. They're just tremendous to have. I love every one of them. I appreciate every one of them. We're just glad to have them. They're a major help. A post by Amanda Hayes earlier this evening, they delivered even a post report from their work with the Relay for Life. She mentioned that.
All the after-action reviews.
Yeah. They're going to be more into, and that's their involvement with the tabletop exercise. We've really evolved the VIPS organization itself. And they're really starting to see a lot more activity in critical incidents, pre-planned, even active incidents. They've helped us out on. Obviously, nothing that's enforcement-related or something that a certified officer's doing, but they help in ancillary capacity with traffic control and planning and management, those types of things. They've really been great with, especially with COVID issues, with everything from some of the changes we've had to do with, like Relay for Life and some of the other community events, some of the food drives. They've been instrumental in helping us develop incident action plans and after-action reviews and just tremendous. Steve Wyckoff, the coordinator of VIPS, handles a lot of that type of paperwork and has a great model for that. It's a tremendous asset. Can't say enough about it.
What age were three of you?
The new members, we have an individual who's retired from the FBI. And we have a girl who is in college and then another lady who is in between. So, yeah.
Live rings?
Yep, live rings. Just love to have them all.
That's great. Matt, while you're up there, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and talk about the list of eligibles as well as the quote from WatchGuard.
Okay.
We'll do the list of eligibles. First, council, you'll find that in your packet about midway or so, maybe just a little bit past midway back. It's on a piece of paper with the city's seal up top. You'll find the three eligibles listed on that page, listed by their test score. And Matt, if there's anything you want to say about any of these three or...
Just, just real quick, by code, whenever you have a vacancy in the police department, the code does authorize no more than three, being the top three scores from the written test, to be certified as eligible for filling the vacancy in the police department. And that's reflective in these three names that you have on your letter here. These are the names that we're currently conducting the background checks on. And again, once the packet is complete, we'll have that ready to forward to council for your consideration for interviews.
Okay. Counsel, I entertain a motion that we accept the three names listed before you, that being Gary Lawrence Brown, Trenton Lee Cooper, and Al LaRusi. Is that correct?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Rylands. We have a second by Mr. Thomas. Any discussion? Hearing for the need for none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed, motion carries. Okay. And then further on back in the packet, almost at the very end, we have the quote for, it's got WatchGuard. It's actually, it's a few pages long here. I'll defer again to Chief Gregory as well as to Ambi, if she wants to chime in on it.
The only thing I wanted to point out is in your packets where WatchGuard quote is, where it copied that dark, the main important part, the money, the money amounts in there, it did copy. So you might want to write this in. It's a big number, $117,669.
$669?
Yes. Okay. And then now Matt's on your...
So real quick on this project, this is something that introduced the budget meeting back in the spring. This is a five-year project, anticipated five-year project that will equip all 11 vehicles in the police fleet with in-car cameras. It will also upgrade our existing body cameras to make into a wireless capacity, which will sync with the in-car cameras themselves. Right now, and really, if you look at what we have now with our body cameras versus the upgrade, they'll look the same. The difference is just in the technology, the wireless technology and the syncing technology. So the compatibility of each of these devices will also transition storage of our videos to a cloud-based server. Right now, we are, we have an onsite server. Obviously, with this much video data, our policy calls for housing all videos for two years, at which time, if they're not evidentiary, they are deleted. So that's a large amount of data, especially if you're adding in-car cameras on top of that. And so the cloud service that, it is coordinated through a WatchGuard and syncs with this equipment, will allow for a much more expanded storage capacity beyond our capabilities right now. I mentioned that this is a five-year project. So the total project being $117,669 will be divided over the course of five years, interest-free. This is directly through the company. So we're just making payments toward the principal. So the WatchGuard was the only company that had submitted a quote. And I'll present that for council.
What was that, if it was $117,000?
$10,312.
This is divided over five years, so $20,000 a year. Was this in your budget this year?
It was, yeah.
What amount was it?
I added it in to, to begin this fiscal year with the first year's payment. And then in my capital improvement plan, I have a contingency for it to occur over the next four years beyond this fiscal year.
You got to get this down, too.
I mean, it's, if you, what I like about this is it enables us to get both body cameras, storage. This also includes installation in our vehicles and the in-car cameras. If we just bought the in-car camera just for comparison, and this is what has precluded us from doing this up to this point, if we just outright purchased an in-car system, you're looking at about $5,000 to $6,000 just for the hardware per unit upfront. And then all the ancillary costs with like installation and storage and things like that are on top of that. So to be able to break this up over five years has made it a lot more realistic for us to be able to achieve this.
This is both through hardware and software?
I'm sorry?
Both hardware and software.
It is, yeah. The software, I guess, would be the cloud storage and the access. Each officer has access to it through what's known as Evidence Library is the application.
Is the name of the company WatchGuard?
Yes, WatchGuard. WatchGuard is actually the vendor for our current body cameras that we've had in place since 2015. And so we're just upgrading our infrastructure with media recording technology.
Makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Okay. We've heard the chief's recommendation. Being that it is the only quote, we've got one option. So I would entertain a motion from council that we accept the quote from WatchGuard.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Thomas to have a second. Mr. Rylands, I believe I heard. Sorry, Mr. Sanders.
That's all right.
He'll write his own name.
That's right. He's in charge of the notes. So whatever he says. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed. Sorry, got choked up. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Matt, one question. It was in your report, we had like a very high number of felony arrests?
Yes.
And it was based fraudulent use of...
Something like that? Yeah. What really made that jump was the singular, the singular charge of fraudulent use of an access device. And this is singled around a particular case, a single case that, it's a case that was just recently presented to grand jury that had taken place over a long period of time. But when it came to our attention late spring and we began to investigate it, we uncovered all of these occurrences. And that's what that's... It's not 44 individual incidents. It's a single case.
What did it do to them?
In the particular case, if I'm thinking right, it involves an individual who was using the identity of somebody they were taking care of, who's since deceased. And they were using their identity to defraud, I believe, welfare as well as prescription medications.
That's unbelievable. I got a question. I never heard of the breed Dutch Shepherd. Is that a newer breed?
No. I guess it's been around for a while. It's the deviation of like the German shepherds. They look very, if you looked at the two sub-bas, they look very similar.
How, how many pounds of a milk weigh?
Not sure. I think they get up to 40, 50 pounds, something like that. But from my understanding, when William went and picked it out, he was telling me what really drove him to it. It was very people-friendly. And obviously, you know, as I described before, we really want to have a community aspect to our K-9 unit. And that's really what sold us on Eros is how well-turned it was to people.
And one other question I have, we were talking to an individual about the skateboarding and sort of more, she mentioned all the problems we have with drugs in our community. Where do you, where do we stand today relative to two, three, four years ago? I don't know. It seems like the task force, they have arrested a lot of people in the last six months, is my understanding.
Yeah, they have. Obviously, we still have a lot of issues in town and throughout our community with drugs. That's something that has not went away despite our efforts. But beyond that, we do remain vigilant. Our task force has been very successful. In fact, we just had an emergency board of directors meeting just a couple of days ago and brought in Philip P. D. and Lewis County Sheriff's Department back into our task force.
That's great.
So the numbers are increasing. There's a lot more interest in the area on what we always call a force multiplier. We've seen that with our own operations. The task force has seen that through its own successes. The surrounding community has seen that. So work obviously continues on that. We work hand-in-hand with a lot of folks in the community who utilize, if they don't directly contact us or contact an individual officer, we have formats for that. But we have outreach through informants and other people who cooperate with us. And a lot of good work is being done.
When you listen to the national news with the pandemic, a lot of things, drugs increase, alcohol's increased, domestic violence and so forth.
Yeah, we've seen, and I mentioned this over the last couple of meetings, unfortunately, and whether it's a direct result of the pandemic and some of the public conscious as a result of the pandemic, you'd have to think it's probably an extension of it. But we definitely have seen a lot more drug usage, especially more overdoses. In fact, if you recall the large drug raid that occurred on Cooper Street back two or three months ago, a lot of the activities that led up to that were really the direct result of a number of overdoses that were happening, not just here in town, but just throughout our community. There were just, seemed like so many all at once. And I know at least one of them, maybe a couple of them were fatal at that time. And again, all at once. This is like a proliferation of them at that time. So.
Anything further for Chief Gregory? Thank you very much. Do you and I need to get together about this policy review committee? Or is this something that...
I think just have a, just bring the committee together for the meeting at that point. And I'd anticipate that meeting maybe just soon after Labor Day.
Okay.
Just give me enough time to finish up the manual revision. I anticipate that about a week or so.
Sounds good.
Tell you, offers to stay safe.
Yep.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Have a good evening, good weekend.
Okay. You too. Thank you.
Okay. Tom, do you have anything that's now or do you want to defer until...
I'll defer until...
Okay. All right. We are down to correspondence and information. We have a few things in your packet to review. We have the City of Buchanan COVID-19 Response Survey. The link is listed. I believe Josh Trent has worked on that for us. Is that correct?
I believe Josh Trent has worked on that for us. Is that correct?
Yes, he's been working on that. And he couldn't come tonight for a presentation, but we'll get you...
He's coming for Consolidated, yes. That's correct. We have the, of course, we want to remind everybody that the North Locust Street at the railroad crossing, it will be closed beginning Saturday. Please avoid the area. If you're heading west, turn left at the courthouse and go out the Weston Road to get on the highway. If you're heading east, you can go over Island Avenue and get on at Children's Run. Or if you're heading north, you can just bypass it through Liggett Edition. So please avoid the area while we, I hope to goodness, get a really nice railroad crossing for the first time ever there. So we have that reminder in your packet. We also have a reminder that Crossroads Recycling Center has closed, much due to misuse. But we are still offering curbside recycling at residents inside the city limits, as well as the center at Mudlick remains open, and anyone can take their materials out there. Stockard Use Center is accepting applications for part-time program assistance for the after-school program. And then finally, the Water Department is also accepting applications for a full-time water plant operator. Okay, down to the consent agenda. As I always say, this is where our city recorder gets to shine. Approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, approval of the building permits and wiring permits, as well as approval of paying of the bills. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mrs. Albal, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Rigger. Hearing for the need for no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion has carried. Thank you very much. So we have dispensed with a lot of our strategic items. We have, and just F2 is nothing really for right now. But as you'll note, we do have an executive session on the books for this evening for Personnel Matters. So F2 is just basically a prelude to that. F1, we have the approval of Ordinance 446, State Building Code Update Adoption. This is for second reading. This is, as you'll recall, this is basically a formality by the state of West Virginia of just updating the ordinance that's already on the books. Is Mr. O'Neill in the area? I can read it by caption if he's... Do you have anything you want to add to this? I just basically set the table and told the council it was just state formality, and we're updating...
Did we read it?
No. You want to do that?
I'll do that. Ordinance number 446 of the City of Buchanan and Ordinance, amending prior ordinances of the City of Buchanan by providing for the adoption of the West Virginia State Building Code set forth and defined by Title 87, Series 4 of the Code of State Rules as amended and declaring an emergency. This is an emergency ordinance because of the timing of the Fire Marshal's ruling that came out. So that just means that this will take effect immediately upon passage.
Okay, this is the second and final reading. Although, I will call for the question, what are we doing? We have to get a motion. Do we have a, hear a motion? We have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mrs. Albal. I know it's been a long meeting, I'm a little flustered. All right. Hearing for the need for no discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion is carried. Okay. F4, council in your packet, there are some appointments. If I can find it, where they put it in here. Oh, here they are, okay. I'm going to go through quickly the appointments that, as you'll recall, we, this is, this is part of what we met about a few weeks back. We made some phone calls and sent some messages to some folks. We're not all the way done with this. We've got about, I think, three outstanding committees, but we are, we're well enough on the way done to be able to have a slate to present for our approval this evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, where is that?
It's like...
Midway?
More close, yeah, about midway, maybe like just 60% of the way through. Past the...
Right past that ordinance.
Right before the resolution, if you remember where we did that.
Yeah.
Right after the Police Civil Service.
Got it. It's not in there.
Keep on going.
This way.
Yeah.
Oh, there.
There they are.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll quickly read through these. Essentially, we essentially have no changes to the top of this list. Assistant City Recorder is Ambie Jenkins. Director of Finance Administration is Ambie Jenkins. Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. Addressing Officer is Jerry Arnold. Chief of City Police is Matthew Gregory. Chief of City Fire Department is J.B. Kimball. City Engineer is Jay Holland. City Architect is Bryson Van Nostrand. Building Code Enforcement Officer is Vincent Smith. City Attorney is Tom O'Neill. Municipal Court Judge is Helen Eckert. City Electrical Inspector is Vincent Smith. Section 504 Compliance Officer, or ADA, is Brad Hawkins. SYCC Director, Deborah Brockelman. Flood Plane Manager and Coordinator is Jay Holland. City Technology Officers, Richard Clemmons. Information Coordinator, Grant Researcher, Writer, is Kelly Cronin-Sams. City HR is Ambie Jenkins. Water Department Superintendent, Kelly Arnold. Waste Department Superintendent, Jeff Wamsley. Sanitary Department Superintendent, Buck Samples. And Street Department Park and Parks Superintendent is Brad Hawkins. Again, none of that has changed from the previous administration.
So we should, I think we should just say we approve all of this.
Well, we're, 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 okay. If we want to do section by section?
I would like to do that.
Okay, all right. So under the first section of our administration, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the names read.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mrs. Albal, is there discussion? Hearing for the need for none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion is carried. Water Board, this is a three-year term of office. The mayor is the chair, it's a term of office. Don Nestor is term 2018 to 2021. Erasmo Rizzo is a renewal, term 2020 to 2023. Jack Rigger will be the council member, that's a term of office. Dave Thomas is a member of council, that's also a term of office. And City Recorder is term of office, City Recorder is non-voting. I'm entertaining a motion that we approve the Water Board.
Second.
They have a second, okay. Motion by Albal, sorry, motion by Albal, second by Buckle. Getting ready to say, is there anything? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, right, motion carries. Waste Board.
Question, does who abstain on that, since I'm on that list?
If you, if you want to, it's up to you.
Okay.
Just a procedural question.
I'll do that, too.
Okay. So Jack Rigger and Tom have, Thomas have chosen to abstain due to their participation on that board.
Make it tough on you guys.
What's that? No, that's for later.
Okay, thank you.
It's an idea I have.
Okay.
Okay. Waste Board, it's a three-year term as well. The mayor is the chair. I've asked Scott Randall to fill the seat of, that was resigned from Nathan Fetty. That's a 20 to 2023 term. Mary Albal is a council member, that's a term of office. City Recorder's term of office, and it is non-voting. We have a motion to approve the Waste Board.
So move.
Second. Motion by Sanders, second by Rylands.
That's correct.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed, motion is carried. Sanitary Board, this is a three-year term of office. The mayor is the chair, that's a term of office. Gene Frye is 2018 to 2021. Phil Loftus is renewal, 2020 to 2023. And then City Recorder is also a term of office, non-voting. We have a motion to approve Sanitary Board.
So move.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Rylands, second by Albal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion is carried. Consolidated Public Works Board, this is a two-year term. Mayor is the chair, term of office. City Recorder, term of office, non-voting. Pamela Buckle, council, term of office. C.J. Rylands, council, term of office. Nancy Shob is from 2019 to 2021. And then Mark Waldo is a renewal, 2020 to 2022. We have a motion to approve the Consolidated Public Works Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Albal, we have a second by Sanders. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, let the minutes reflect that councilman...
Do you abstain, too? Why am I in the board, so?
Yes, let the minutes reflect that...
That's a good idea.
Well, okay, we still have, we still have enough to vote, so.
Abstaining is Thomas, Buckle, and Rylands.
Rylands. Okay. Moving on. Police Civil Service Commission, this is a four-year term. It is concerning political party affiliation. We have Elisa Lively, we have Jerry Henderson. Both of those terms are from 2018 to 2022. Mark Spencer will replace Terry Mills for his expired term for 2020 to 2024. And City Recorder is term of office, non-voting. We have a motion to approve the Police Civil Service Commission.
So move.
Motion by Buckle, second by Rigger. All those are, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Fire Civil Service, there are no changes. Lenora Wentz, Robert Parker, Abigail Benjamin, and City Recorder, nobody was up. So we don't, we don't, those are already approved. Zoning Board of Appeals, this is a three-year term. Ann Levisay, 2019 to 2022. Timothy Reese, 2019 to 2022. Jenny Duran is a renewal, 2020 to 2023. Shawna Jones, 2018 to 2021. And Greg Popovich, 2019 to 2022. Do we have a motion to approve the Zoning Board of Appeals?
So move.
Motion by Thomas, second by Albal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Television Cable Board, this is a two-year term. Duane Squires, 2019 to 2021. I've asked Joey Slaughter from North Buchanan to join this board. He called me with some concerns about Sudden Link, and he's lived in a lot of places. And I thought he could be of some help with many of the issues we're having right now with our provider. That would be a 2020 to 2022. Tim Smith, 2019 to 2021. City Recorder's term of office, and it is voting. The mayor is the chair, term of office. And the city attorney is a non-voting member. Do we have a motion to approve the Television Cable Board?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Ryland, second by Thomas. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Building Commission, we have, this is also party-affiliated. We have Jeff Harvey as a renewal, 2020 to 2025. Renee Preston fills an expired term, or an unexpired term by Ray Rosenkrantz for 2017 to 2022. Mark Hayes, 2018 to 2023. Louis Simmons, 2017 to 2022. And Maureen Wilson is a renewal, 2020 to 2025. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have to be live in the city limits to be on these boards?
Some you do, and some you don't.
So Building Commission, you don't?
I don't believe it is, that's part, that's a requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, I mean, it's, 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 you have to read the charter and the code to see which ones, but not everyone requires you to live in the city. Like Animal Care and Control, you don't have to.
I just want to ask, because I know one person that doesn't live in the city.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Oh, we have a motion. Rylands and, and, and the, who did it? Give it to Mary. Albal, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. There are no changes to the Housing Enforcement Board. Those don't have timelines. And basically, everyone that's in there has to be in it pertinent to what is called for by the code. We are not finished with Stockard, please flip the page. We are also not finished with Planning Commission and, or Historic Landmarks Commission. The Charles W. Gibson Library, we have, these are staggered terms. We have Susan Beath, two years. William O'Brien, four years. Butch Rainey, three years. Martha Edgell, five years. And then the replacer, the new member slash replacement is Beth Post, and that is a one year. We have a motion to approve the Charles W. Gibson Library Board.
So move.
A motion by Sanders, we have a second. Second by Thomas. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion is, motion carries. Region 7 Planning and Development is the mayor, that's a term of office. We have Upstate County Recreation Board, two-year term. Will Squires, Dennis Cord...
Cortez.
Cortez. Started, I'm starting to taste my mask. Those are, those terms do not expire yet. Upstate County Development Authority, I will be representing the city on the UCDA, and that's a term of office. We have, okay, we're not finished with the Board of Health yet. Upstate County Convention and Visitors Bureau, there are no changes to that. We have Mary Albal as a council representative, which she indicated she'd like to remain as the CBB rep. And then we have Lacy Ramsey, owner of Jester Line, as our city rep. Buchanan Upstate Airport Authority, three-year term. We have Rich Clemmons, his term is not up yet, 2018 to 2021. Brian Huffman, he filled in an unexpired term of Bill Thomas, and his goes until 2022. And then we have Randy Sanders. C.J. had sent me an email and requested to not continue with that board. So I wanted to open it up, I wanted to make sure we had a councilperson on there. And since Randy doesn't get a vote in a lot of these, I asked Randy to fill in on the airport board until 2022.
That's right.
All right, do we have a, kind of, let's entertain a motion that we accept the airport authority? All right, we have a motion by Albal, second by Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, okay. Housing Authority, five-year term. We have essentially no, we don't have any changes. Michael Levisay is a renewal, so to 20, from 2020 to 2025. Animal Care and Control Commission, we do not have any changes. Armory Committee, Ambie Jenkins, no change. Chamber of Commerce Representative, Ambie Jenkins, no change. Okay, last page. So we have four standing committees that, and I had a conversation with Teresa. We're not, I'm not going to keep the Insurance Committee as, because we've got some new folks on council. I was a member of that as a council member. So we'll just, if we need to reconvene, which we will, going into the budget session, Councilman Thomas, what I think we'll do is we'll just, we'll keep you on that, but we'll start with some new folks going into the next time to get some fresh ideas. So I did not include this on, on that, on this, on this list. So General Fund Revenue Review Committee is mayor, is chair. Councilman C.J. Rylands, Councilman Dave Thomas, Ambie Jenkins, and Barbara Henkel. None of these changed, by the way. Kalia Police Review Committee, City Police Chief Matt Gregory, Doug Loudon with the City Police. And then also Chief of City Fire is J.B. Kimball. The mayor, Councilman Rylands, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, and city attorney. The CFIA Policy Review Committee. Jack, I served on that, and I, since you've attended a fire meeting with myself and Mr. Sanders, I would ask that if you wanted to replace myself on the fire committee?
I could do that.
Okay, you're not listed, but I will have you added to that. I meant to do that in the final draft. So we have Buchanan Police Chief Matt Gregory, Buchanan Fire Chief J.B. Kimball, the mayor, council member will be Jack Rigger, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, city attorney, and Joey Backsa. Finally, the Technology Committee is Jay Holland, Jerry Arnold, Ambie Jenkins, Rich Clemmons, Phil Loftus, Duane Squires, Seth Hoffman, and Randy Sanders. Okay. That concludes our list of appointments for this meeting. We will have the other three or so for the next meeting, because council, I still need to talk to you about a couple of them. So that, we are finished. So, so that, we are finished with F4. That brings us down to comments and announcements, and we will start with, we'll start with Mary.
I just feel bad for myself and all other people that live here in Buchanan that have dealt with Sudden Link changes, cancelings, and whatever, okay? It's a real stressful time.
Yeah.
And I know what you talked to me about earlier, but that would be great. It's just really bad, bad.
And on that note, I get stopped all the time on the street at the River Trail, walking, at Walmart, you name it. You know, the cable is a tough, you know, it's just, it's tough to make money in cable. A lot of folks say we need some competition. In a perfect world, I would agree. Unfortunately, no one is beating down the door to come to Buchanan to compete with Sudden Link. So, one of the, I had a conversation with the new appointee to the Cable Board. I talked to him about, you know, we, as a Cable Board, need to do some research as to what we can do to help folks out with Sudden Link or with the cable system itself, with navigating either issues with Sudden Link or trying to find something that's going to be more user-friendly. I too am disappointed that Sudden Link closed the office here in Buchanan, that they, we've had a cable office in Buchanan for many years. I understand they've closed offices all across West Virginia, and they've laid a lot of our West Virginians and, as well as Buchanan residents off, so...
I think the issue's not competition, there's too much competition.
Well, and that's...
There's so many different avenues.
Yes. You've got streaming, and that's a whole animal in itself. But we've got to, we've got to come together as a Cable Board and as a, to try to look at what options we might have. But to the citizens, we hear you. We know that it's an issue, and you just shared with me, you've been on the phone probably collectively six or seven hours.
More than that.
With trying to, with Sudden Link, trying to get through to them. So, you know...
Same thing's happening to phone companies, too.
Yeah.
So much competition.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, you look at, you look at someone like, well, AT&amp;T and Verizon, the competition's unbelievable.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else, Mary?
Yes, sir, thank you.
We appreciate your work with that, too. Mrs. Bucklew.
I don't know if you all realize it or not, but Kelly Cronin lost her grandmother this past week, Marge Luther.
Yeah.
And I want to extend our condolences. I just found out today, she's a customer mom, I just found out about that. So, just wanted to give her our sorries.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention, Pam. Anything else?
No.
CJ?
So tonight, we talked about the River Trail Extension and getting it out further, but for some time, we've been talking about connecting it at the College to downtown, to City Hall. And that, there was a discussion, there was a study that needed done, and there was a cost of about $16,000. That's been subsequently bargained down to about $10,000. And I think it would be important to form a committee, or maybe you should have a conversation with the City Architect and see how we can move this project forward. And I think it would help us a lot when we reapply for another grant to show that we're taking initiative. And I think that's an important connection. Downtown, although it might go through the properties or the back properties of Jack's. And so, I'd just like to revisit that and try to get that going again if we can get this study funded. And try to move it forward.
I agree.
All right.
I'd like, and I, when we talk to your suggestion about talking to the City Architect, I'd like if you came with, you'd be part of the conversation.
Sure.
I don't know, it could be a tough sell with this guy, you never, you never know.
Well, he should be on the committee.
Put him on the committee, that's a good idea.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.
Put that in running.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Lord.
Hell, we can name that part of the walk, Jack.
Okay, we're losing it now, okay. Dave Thomas, anything else, CJ?
No.
Okay, all right. Dave Thomas, you're up.
The only thing I have to say is that I understand through some people in town that there's a problem at the animal shelter. And evidently, there's been a resurgence or something that's happened with a lot of the animals are there because of court cases, and the place is full. So when they get a, another animal or a couple of animals, their life expectancy is very, very short. And I haven't had a chance to, I just found out about this this afternoon, and I want to call the county commissioners and see what's going on. I don't know if the people are even aware of it right now, but I think they'd be pretty upset. There was five or six puppies transferred today because they were told that they would be put down within two or three days.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, I don't know what's going on, but if anybody can talk to some of the commissioners, we need to find out.
Yeah.
That's a joint between Lewis County and...
Correct.
I actually heard about that this week also. I have a 94-year-old customer who wanted to adopt a Yorkie. This has been going since April, and evidently they're in a trial where there was a puppy mill going on, ongoing on Barber County and here. Because the trial's going to be in Lewis County, I think.
What can I get? I'm sorry, can you?
And they keep moving it back.
Yeah.
They're moving it back all the time, and as a result, the shelter is overwhelmed.
And because it's going to be at a trial, they can't do anything with the animals.
And some dogs have been in there for three months, but that's because of the judges. I don't mean negative, but it's a weird situation.
If you want to, I'll follow up as well. The County Commission, they're involved, they're directly involved with that being that it's a county entity, not...
I'm going to call three commissioners.
Yeah, we need to find out. Anything else, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Jack?
Deferred Maintenance is a problem everywhere. And, you know, when Ambie said she's been wanting to buy replaced doors and work on the foundations for three years. I appreciate frugality and good stewardship, but also good stewardship is not deferring maintenance to facilities.
Amen.
And, you know, we need to, we need to upgrade, you know, this facility, as you call it, the city's house. And, you know, I think, I'm sure there's plans for all the structures in town that we're responsible for, and we need to...
Can't forget about this one.
We need to be aggressive, yeah, we can. But I'm glad we fixed, did the temporary patch on the roof, and we can come up with a good plan for...
As we move forward, I would like for you, as well as Counselman Rylands, to work, we'll work closely as we get into the new budget year and as we get, we get through this patch, when working with, when we get the new comprehensive plan for the roof, as well as the facility. I'd like for you two to be pretty involved in that, given your backgrounds and your professions. Okay. Anything else, Jack? I agree with you.
Just appreciate this committee, it's a solid group of people. Good council.
I agree. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things. We just, City Hall received the information about the West Virginia Municipal League's virtual conference, which is scheduled for September 24th. This is something that I think all council members should take a look at. The fact that it's going to be virtual this time would make it much more accessible. I attended my first Municipal League meeting earlier in the year and found it very informative. So I would say, check with Teresa, any council members that want to participate in this. Get the information, try to sign up for it, and participate. So, that's one thing I wanted to just toss out, and we'll remind you again. The second thing, I'm happy to announce that we are very close. Within a day or two, we'll be able to submit our bid to the World Association of Marching Showbands for the national championships. We have been working a lot on this. This is the bid, this is what it looks like.
What year is it again?
2023. If we were to be awarded a bid, it would be in 2023. I want to thank Brad Kellison here in Buchanan, who brought the idea to me initially. Lee Winter, who really had been a big supportive person in it. Locally, Elisa Lively, Kelly Cronin-Sams, Laura Meadows have been helping me tremendously on this. We have a lot of support from West Virginia Wesleyan College, John Waltz, David Blonde, and of course President Therson. Buchanan Upstate High School, Sarah Stankis, Ralston Press. Those guys have been helping us immensely. We have letters of support already in the packet. Of course, from US Senator Joe Manchin, Sheldon Moore Capito, Governor Jim Justice, Mayor Skinner, Dr. Stankis for the high school, previously mentioned John Waltz at Wesleyan, David Blonde from Wesleyan, the diplomats, a couple of groups that have participated. So it looks really, it's, I'm very pleased with the final product. We've got to format it up and get it ready to submit digitally. So hopefully, we're going to submit it. The final, the final decision will not come until the end of the year. But again, this is for the folks watching TV, this is what it looks like. Anyone on council from County Council, this is one of the drafts. So, let's keep our fingers crossed. 2023 could be very exciting in July, hosting around 2,500 students from around the world in the World Association of Marching Showbands Championship. So that's all I have today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I don't have any further comments, except we always just thank all of our employees across the city for all that they do, from police to fire to water to sewer. We also, of course, thank Channel 3 for live streaming us this evening. I know it was a long meeting. Hopefully you all didn't have anything else scheduled tonight, so... But we thank you all, thank the press for being here. And if we don't have anything else for the, go to the order. We want to remind council, we do have an executive session. No decisions will be made this evening, try to keep it quick.